One, verse number nine. It's a real simple scripture. One of my favorite. I will be reading from God's Word translation. You can write that down and get it when you get home. It's Joshua, chapter one, verse number nine. It says, "I have commanded you, be strong and courageous. Don't tremble or be terrified, because the Lord, your God, is with you wherever you go." Joshua, chapter one, verse number nine. And I just want to tell each one of you all to be strong and courageous. Be encouraged, because God is with you forever. Amen?
Amen.
Amen. We have a duty as the people to vote. There's three candidates that were supposed to be here. Robert Rodriguez, who is absent today. Diane, Ms. Diana Alala.
Ayala.
Ayana. Sorry about that. And Ms. Tamika Maps. We are definitely, definitely waiting and anticipating what they have to say. But it's our job as the people to vote. Our job as the people to vote. We cannot complain about what's going on in our neighborhood if we don't go out and vote ourselves. So it's our duty to vote. We are here today not only to listen to the candidates, but we also want you to sign up for thy pledge to vote card and the voter registration card. You cannot participate if you're not signed up. Correct?
Correct.
You cannot participate if you're not signed up. So please, ladies and gentlemen, please sign up to vote. If you know some people that should have been here and not here, they still have an opportunity to sign up to vote. We just want as many people as possible to let your voice and your heart be known. God bless you again and welcome to Fort My Baptist Church. At this time, I'm going to pass it over to my colleague in ministry, Pastor Sealy, and she will greet you and give you further instructions. God bless you.
Good evening.
Good evening.
It is good to be here with all of you this evening. And it's good to see so many smiling faces. Amen. I am the pastor of the My Haven Reform Church at 146th and Third Avenue. And I'm gonna put my bid in too. You know, a bid was... I'm gonna put my bid in too. We have pre-service prayer at 10:00 a.m. Service starts immediately afterward. We have wonderful blended worship. We praise the Lord. Hallelujah. And we are open for all of y'all to come and worship with us. And so we say that we are the church in the heart of the community, with the community in the heart of the church. And so because of that, we find that it is our obligation to be here tonight with this forum at this critical time in our community and this critical time in our nation. And it's important that you have come tonight. But like Pastor Duckett said, it is really important that you vote. You may think that your vote doesn't mean anything, but your vote carries a lot of weight. Your vote is your voice. So this evening, as you listen to the candidates, think deeply about what they are saying to you. Think about who is the best candidate to represent your needs in this community. So we want to... Our candidates have already been introduced. Our candidates will have three minutes to answer the questions. Now, we know that there are a lot of questions that we can't address tonight. And we know that you have a lot of questions. And so we have chosen some questions that are priority for the faith-based community. Okay? But at the end of this forum, we will have a set of questions that you have written down on your cards, and then we will address those questions. So we're gonna start with an opening question, and then community members will ask you specific questions. Okay? We need to be respectful of everybody in the house. We need to be respectful of the House of God. The candidates know what their timeframe is. The candidates have already been instructed about being civil to each other. They assured me that they are friends. So we're gonna have a friendly conversation this evening. So our opening question is, to the candidates, what is your overarching vision as a leader for this community, for the My Haven community, for the next four years if you win the seat? You have three minutes to respond, and we have a timekeeper who's gonna keep you on time.
All right. So I'm Tamika Map, by the way. When I'm elected as City Councilwoman, I'll be working closely with Assemblyman Rodriguez and Congressman Espolat to improve the district's quality of life by holding NICA accountable for their upkeep and ongoing repairs in each development; by working with progressive leaders to increase the minimum wage to $20 per hour, so no one work three to six jobs to make ends meet; by working with the New York City Department of Environmental Protection to make sure when our ambulance and our film crew is being idle, that they're protecting our air that we breathe in; working with my City Council colleagues to provide an affordable pathway to citizenship for all law-abiding, long-term residents in the district; and by working with my City Council colleagues to preserve affordable housing and make sure we have enough rent-stabilized homes in the district; and by saying no to all rezoning throughout the
I think that what I would like to see happen in the South Bronx, and one of the issues that I would like to concentrate a lot of attention is obviously is a housing-related issue. We represent a district that is split evenly between East Harlem and the South Bronx. And in the East Harlem part of the district, we've already started to see rapid gentrification that has been ongoing for the last 11 years since I've been with the Speaker. And that gentrification is slowly creeping into the South Bronx, because, you know, many people who wouldn't even be caught, you know, walking the streets of My Haven now find it really not as bad, right? It's really nice. You can get waterfront access to apartments that are still relatively affordable. So housing is definitely gonna be on the forefront of what I would like to focus on, building more affordable housing, preserving existing units. We see a lot of harassment of residents in this district as it is. We have, while I was working for the City Council Speaker, we opened an office specifically here in the South Bronx at 137th and St. Anne's to be able to provide residents and constituents services that they were not receiving. We don't have an abundance of social service agencies in this community. Unfortunately, we don't have access to free legal services directly in the vicinity of the My Haven area. So we were able to bring those resources to the district through the Speaker's office, and I would like to be able to continue to build on that. We have attorneys that deal with housing rights issues. We have attorneys that work with undocumented residents as well. But I would like to continue to build on that work.
Thank you for your responses. I want you to remember to please be patient with the candidates and also our candidates to be mindful of our timekeeper. At this time, I would like to pass the mic again over to Pastor Sealy, and she will give you another question on defending our immigrant community.
This question comes from Margarita Cabera from St. Luke Catholic Church. In our community, there is anger, fear, and insecurity when we speak about the treatment of immigrants all over this country. When people heard what President Trump was threatening, many people in our community decided to go back to their country of origin with all of their family members. Everyone feels so much fear due to the reality of what we are facing with ICE showing up in all areas previously known as safe, such as churches, schools, and courthouses. You are running for office in a district where we have a speaker that was and is a champion of immigrants, especially when it comes to the funding side-by-side for the NYIFUP. Are you on the side of the speaker who advocated to provide funds and services to the immigrant without taking into account their criminal history? Or are you on the side of the mayor who wants to deny legal support to some immigrants? And we're going to give you extra time, since there's two of you instead of three of you. So we will give you four minutes each.
I'll take the... I guess I'll go first this time. So the NIFA program actually was started, it was initiated by the City Council in 2013. And this year, we were hoping that the mayor would streamline the expense of that program into the city's budget. He did that. He actually increased the budget as well, which we were really excited about. But then he imposed some restrictions that stipulated that if you had been convicted of a criminal, some sort of crime, you know, of a crime, that you would no longer benefit from free legal services if you had to go through deportation process. We strongly believe that the program was intended to serve all people, that everyone is entitled to due process. And I stand with the speaker on this one. I believe that the original intent was what it was. Nothing has changed on our end, and, you know, so I stand with her.
I'm on the side of due process. Every resident of the district has a right to representation. Moreover, this is why I feel it's important that long-term residents have an affordable pathway to citizenship to remove the worry and fear caused by undocumented status. If we can increase the number of residents with a legal status, we can decrease the deportation hearing. In the meantime, we must continue to fund NIFA for everybody in the district.
We are thankful to hear that both candidates are for the rights of immigrants. It's so much to know that people in this country and in this community and this local district are still welcomed, even though they might not fit in, they might not look the same, and they might not speak our language, but they're still welcomed and loved by these two candidates. Our next question would be from our sister, Ashley Ellis. She will be talking about preserving affordable housing and protecting our housing. Sister Ashley Ellis, at this time.
All right. So my question is... Can y'all hear me?
A little.
Y'all can't hear me? Can y'all hear me? All right. There we go. All right. All right. Put my candidate's voice on. We have folks living in the community due to fear. We have folks being harassed by their landlords and unable to get the repairs they need in their homes. We have folks in public housing who are uncertain about what the national administration means for the security of their housing. Plus, the gentrification of our community has only been visibly increasing month by month. As community members, we need to be absolutely clear about who are our elected officials for. Are you for our current community members, local business owners and tenants, or are you for the for-profit developers and landlords? In addition to advocating for the passage of the Certificate of No Harassment, which you all said you supported in the voter guide, what other specific plans do you have to protect our people against displacement if elected?
So I'm always for the community, because I am the community. I think we are one of the same. One of the committees I intend to form is a housing committee, which have representatives from all housing types. The tenant bill that just got passed from the City Council is a great start, but it's our job as the City Councilwomen to educate our community on their rights when it comes to landlord harassment and making sure our tenant advocacy department is answering all complaints properly as well. Instead of funding shelters, we need to take the money and support our community programs like Bronx Works, so our residents can have a safety net to stay in their community. We also need to invest in community land trust programs to make sure we have an affordable housing for every income bracket throughout this district.
I obviously... I actually grew up in public housing. I moved to the South Bronx when I was 17 years old after coming out of a shelter with my son. I lived in an apartment that I could not afford to pay, because I had no business having an apartment at that age. I was paying $430 a month. I was living off of public assistance, and I still could not afford to pay my rent. And I was very lucky to find in the borough president's office the assistance that I needed in connecting me to the Jigots Program, which is now known as the FEPs Program. I then transitioned to a project-based Section 8 building that subsidized my rent and allowed me to take jobs that didn't pay me the wages that I deserved. I understand the need, and I understand how valuable affordable housing is to communities like these, because this is my community as well. My children are now a little older. They both are employed and not making enough money to stay in these communities any longer. And so that is obviously something that really concerns me, because when we talk about affordable housing, you know, that's my family, right? We're not people that are financially well-off. I don't come from a family, you know, of real estate developers. So I want to make sure that my family and your family is able to be able to stay in the community that raised them. What we have done, however, in the past, again, I have a little, you know, advantage here, because I have been working for the City Council Speaker's office for the last 11 years. We've been able to bring up the Tenant Protection Act, which allows residents an opportunity to sue their landlords if they're being harassed, right? Which we didn't have access to before. We also have now rights to counsel, so every person, irregardless of, you know, whatever the income that they're bringing in, is entitled to... Well, actually, that's not accurate. You can still... There's still an income cap, but it's a little bit higher than it was. But it assures that the people that need the services the most are guaranteed to get an attorney to come in with them. We've also passed legislation prohibiting landlords from making multiple buyout offers. So before your landlord could ask if you, you know, if he could buy you out, and if you said no, he would show up in your house 9:00 or 10:00 o'clock at night, and he would do this repeatedly, and he would harass you until you accepted the offer. Well, it is now illegal to do that. He can ask you once, and you can say no, and if he does it again, you can report him. There's also... We've also just passed, you know, several pieces of legislation making it, you know, classifying construction as harassment as well, because construction has often been used as a tool to get residents out of their existing units. We have the legal clinics at the district offices, which I explained about earlier. And we also raised the income qualification for the SCRI and DRE program to try to keep the disabled and the elderly in existing units without the burden of increasing rent. So we've done a lot of work already. There's always a lot of work to be done, and I look forward to doing that as your next City Council member.
We are grateful that people that lived here 40, 50, 20, or 30 years are still having access to live near the waterfront or near where they're accustomed to living, near the shopping area, near the hub. We are grateful that you guys, both candidates, are in agreement to keeping the people that lived here, founded this neighborhood, put their investments in this neighborhood, lived in this neighborhood, are still able to stay here. I think everybody should give them a round of applause for that. Something amazing, because we see that gentrification is coming, and we had to be prepared for it, but it's good to know that you have our backs, both candidates. One question I do want to talk about is, we have asked you guys, both candidates, about legislation regarding police accountability. We've asked... All three candidates are supposed to be here. The one who did not answer is not here. But the two that did answer are here. So we want to definitely hear from them. Just a quick story from myself, being a young minority that pastors in the Bronx. I was coming out of the church that I pastor, walked across the street to my car. I'm not a famous pastor. I don't drive an expensive car. So I was driving my regular car, and they pulled me over and said that they saw me fundering or foddling against the locks and the gates of the church. I had one of the members in the car with me, and I was kind of shocked, because I was in a suit, a tie, and I was trying to figure out, if you saw me with keys coming out of a church, how would it be that I'm trying to fondue or harass or break into a place that has my name on it? It doesn't make sense to me. But with all due respect to authority, I did cooperate, and he let me go with no charges or nothing else. But I did speak to his inspector, who was a good friend of mine, Inspector Brian Hennessy. And I'm grateful to have his relations with him. And he gave the guy desk duty for a couple of weeks, and I was excited about that. But with all due respect to their authority, we still have rights as citizens that live in this area. And we want to know from both candidates, Pastor Sealy already said that we have given you four minutes. So we want you to take your time and elaborate on the such incidents that's been going on regarding police brutality and police accountability. But we also want to know, have you ever experienced anything in that nature? Part two to the question, if I'm allowed, is that there's a lot of drug and black-on-black crime that's happening right here in this hub area. And we want to know, are you going to hold police accountable, not only for the rights of the people, but for stopping and being more aggressive on the crime that's going on in our local area? Thank you.
So I support both legislations of the right to know law. I have a 27-year-old son, so yes, I do educate my son every day of what not to do when he walks across the street. And we shouldn't have to do that in our own communities. I'm all about committees. So the other committee that I'm going to be forming is called Community Safety. It will have the district's residents, as well as the community organizations, such as Communities United for Police Reform and Pritchard the Homeless. I'll be working with each precinct captain by holding a monthly committee meeting to make sure we're getting treated fairly in our communities, as well as officers have the tools and support they need to do their jobs properly. Community residents and officers want the same thing, a safe and orderly community free from violence and harassment. By talking to each other and collaborating on how to achieve these goals with mutual respect, can we weed out the bad apples and be successful? We must also recognize that policing is a difficult and stressful occupation as well. It's important that the mental health is monitored frequently, and if necessary, judgment-free treatment is provided. I would like to see the police officers take an annual psychological exam to make sure they continue to protect and serve with courtesy, professionalism, and respect.
I also happen to have a son who's 27 years old. That's why we get along. I was 15 when I had that one. And so, you know, my son is a person of color. We lived in the vicinity of the 50th precinct here in the South, in the Bronx, for many years. And in his teenage years, he was regularly stopped by the police. He would either fit the description of somebody that had committed a crime. He looked like he was up to no good. His pants were sagging. His attitude was bad. He never got arrested. He never got a summons, but he continued to get harassed, to the point that it was daily. Daily harassment for no reason. One day, he walked outside from the house after a nap to go to the store. He helped a woman into the building with her carriage, and they immediately stopped him, and they handcuffed him for a little while while they searched him, because he looked like he fit the description of somebody who had just burglarized an apartment in the area. So I know this very well, and I am very supportive of the Right to Know Act bills. I actually have been endorsed by the New York City Council Progressive Caucus, who has been championing these bills for quite some time. And I, you know, if elected to the City Council, hope to be able to ensure that these bills pass. Having said that, I also have a lot of conversations with my son, and I have three now, about having respect for the police, because I think that we run on dangerous, you know, charter territory when there's this animosity that's building and continuing to build and build and build in our communities, and this is what has been happening for a long time. Our kids are upset. You know, they feel targeted. They're humiliated in front of their peers. But how do we finish... How do we fix that? And so I have had a lot of conversations with my son about how to conduct himself around the police. But I've also had a lot of conversations with the police department about how to conduct themselves in our community. I visit the local precincts regularly. I work with the officers that patrol our streets, because it is important to also educate them and to hold them accountable. And I think that we've done that really, really well. I think we've seen some improvements. Not perfect yet. This is a work in progress, but we need everyone to be a part of this process.
Thank you so much. Being a minority myself, or just a person in general, I think police accountability is very much needed in this community on both spectrums, whether to limit on some and to improve on others. So thank you. Can we clap our hands for our candidates? Yes. I'm going to turn this over to Reverend Sealy, and she will give us our next section.
We have several other questions that we are going to pose. Reverend Duckett and I will pose the questions, and then following those questions, we will take the questions that you have written on your index cards. Has everybody written a question on their index card? Where are the index cards?
The usher is the bathroom. Pass the cards and the pen.
Could you bring the cards up to me, please?
The question was Cheryl, those delivered questions.
She's bringing the cards up. Did anybody not have an opportunity to write a question? Reverend Russell needs a card. justice. In the South Bronx, we live in environmental conditions that are literally killing our people. It's clear that our community has been historically cited as a dumping ground for what other boroughs don't want to deal with, such as waste transfer stations, landfills, and polluting power plants. How do you plan to screen for toxins in our existing buildings, drinking water sources, and public and private land, as well as ensure future sustainable development that protects our environment and our health? You have four minutes each.
I won't eat that much, but I think that, you know, as it relates to, you know, these issues are real. We have one of the districts with the highest asthma rates of any other, you know, in this city, and that's unfortunate. We have playgrounds that sit right next to highway, you know, entrances, which makes absolutely no sense to me. Who would put a playground right in front of, you know, a major highway? We have a school right by the Bruckner Boulevard. These children are, you know, ingesting these fuels day in and day out. You know, we're getting a lot of development that's happening already, and I think that we need to be making a bigger push to ensure that a lot of this development incorporates passive design, that we're building green, and that we're putting in, you know, measures that protect the environment, because, you know, we're not gonna live forever, but our children and our children's children will be here, and they deserve to live in an earth that still exists. We've also... We recently did a lot of work around the plastic bag debate, and it was a big issue, because, you know, we don't want to get rid... My mother didn't want to get rid of the
get rid of the plastic bags, because she's like, "I need the little bag. I need the bag because I use it whenever the kids come over and I want to send food, you know, home. That's where I pack it up and put it away." And so she hoards all of these bags. When you walk around the South Bronx, there's bags littered through all of our trees, right? The same trees that are supposed to be giving us oxygen. And so we have a big problem. So, you know, building passive design, looking for ways to make the environment better, getting rid of the plastic bags in whatever way we can, because we have landfills that are full of, you know, of these bags. Also, I think that, you know, as it relates to the water issue, we recently saw a few months ago that there were schools that tested with high levels of lead. A lot of the schools happen to be in the 8th district, and what we've been able to do is to work with the schools to, we've actually allocated capital dollars to put in filtration systems, because a lot of the infrastructure unfortunately in these schools is really old and that contributes to the low, the high lead numbers. But we need to be doing better and we need to be, to ensure that the Department of Health has the resources that they need on hand to test our water supplies consistently. Well, first of all, just be an advocate at the city council and say no when they try to bring waste transport station into the district and trying to stand up and trying to figure out where other places they can put these things. I'll be working closely with WIAC, is a environmental organization, it's a nonprofit environmental organization, and trying to figure out how we can get the pollution down. Like I said earlier, you know, the Department of Environmental Protection, we're going to be working hand-in-hand because there's some good ideas that we can do, such as put in filters on ambulances and/or film crew staff, that's to bring down the cleaner air, to working with the Department of Environmental Services, to making sure that when they test the water, it's the right materials and making sure that's not cheap stuff that's catching everything. When the lead broke out, matter of fact, my niece went to River East Elementary School when that happened, and as a PTA president, I've just provided water for all the classes because they shouldn't be drinking out of that water at all. And I'm going to ask the state assemblyman what's going on and why he's not, you know, protecting us, and, you know, he doesn't get back to me. So it's really hard to get change done when everybody is not at the table to get it done. So hopefully, by me becoming a city councilwoman, that I will be able to put foot to fire and making sure they hold accountable for everything that they do in the community.
We know that we have a Not62 campaign that pushes awareness of the need for Bronxites to get moving and get healthy. However, the awareness is not enough when folks are working multiple jobs and feeding many mouths. What will you do to encourage healthy lifestyles, such as more green space and infrastructure like trails, better bike path, and access to healthy food that is affordable to our people? Particularly those that do not have insurance or other economic privilege?
It all just go back to raising the minimum wage, right? So we need more money and trying to be a big advocate to push $20 per hour. When the push was $15 an hour, I was at every picket in every place, and it finally got passed, but it's a slow crawl to do it. So hopefully, when it start rolling out, we can actually have the conversation to actually say $20 per hour. And I work on, I'm a board member for 596 Acres, and one of my jobs is to walk around the community and pretty much figure out where is an empty space that we could put a guard in there to educate our community. So I would be working like very hand-in-hand with the community because they will actually get to plant fruits and vegetables and have everything that they need so they can have the access. Also work closely with our grocery stores and trying to figure out how can we help them to provide a lower produce environment, partner up with Morris Heights Community Center, because they give out food vouchers for produce, if nobody knows, now you know. You can get a prescription that says that you want to have healthy food and they actually write your prescription, and you take that to the farmer's market and get your produce. So I would like to see things like that rolled out all the way around for everybody to have access to that.
Yeah, the Not62 campaign, I actually have a lot of friends that are participating now and are challenging each other on social media, which is great because the awareness is there. But what are we doing to ensure that the Bronx is healthier? We have, again, through the city council speaker's office, we were able to see the Bronx Connector come to fruition, which was a big deal for us, because we had a part of the Bronx that was not utilized that connected us to Randall's Island for recreational activity, and, you know, Bronxites didn't have access for a really long time, so we were able to put in some funds for that, and are excited to see it in action for the last couple of years. We've also been investing funding in the Healthy Bucks campaign, and so we give money, these Healthy Bucks, which are the little coupons, to families that, you know, participate in different programs throughout the district, so that they can buy fresh fruits and vegetables at an affordable rate at the local farmer's market. We also work really closely with our local gardens, right? We have a couple of gardeners here who grow these fresh fruits and vegetables and practically give them away to the community, which is a great, you know, benefit to Bronxites. And we, you know, have done some work with the local bodegas to try to get them to change the design, right? We're used to walking into the bodega and we have, you know, an abundance of sodas and cookies and, you know, all type of junk food, and trying to just move things around a little bit, you know, maybe put the fruits and vegetables in the front, maybe put the waters up front to encourage people to eat healthier. But eating healthy is expensive. It's really expensive, and I know that because I raised a family on public assistance and food stamps, and I know that I was the first person in the supermarket buying the juice that you're not supposed to drink because it was the most affordable and it was the one that lasted the longest. So, you know, there's a lot of work that needs to be done, raising the minimum wage is one way, ensuring the families that are eligible are applying for food stamps. One of the issues that we had when I started working for the city council speaker's office was, we had all of this money, but people, for food stamps, and nobody was applying. And, you know, there was this confusion about why, you know, why wouldn't people apply for something that they're eligible for? Well, have any of you ever attempted to apply for food stamps and seen how demeaning that experience can be? You know, we need to change that culture. We need to stop, you know, making people feel bad because their circumstances may not be, you know, where certain people expect them to be. We don't have the same, you know, we don't all have the same access to the same schools, and, you know, access to better jobs, and sometimes, you know, these services are there to help us, but they restrict the type of foods that we ingest. And so, so we've done a lot, again, around this area, but there's still a lot that needs to be done, and, you know, I commit myself to doing that work.
This is a question that relates to education justice. We have failing schools in Mud Haven. We have a low graduation rate for high school students, and for those who graduate, we have an even lower rate of those who are prepared to go on to higher education. We have a large number of disconnected youth in this community who haven't graduated and can't get a job. How will you stand against the practices and policies of Secretary Betsy DeVos? And how will you promote and protect our public school system? How will you work with your colleagues to strengthen the standards for both teaching and learning?
So I'm a strong believer in vocational training. I think that not all of us, you know, are born with the instinct of going to school, even the interest. And so vocational high schools offer a very unique opportunity for training for a lot of our young people, and we don't have enough of them. I think in the district, we have maybe one, and that one was threatened with being closed. And they provide a whole bunch of really great resources to our young kids. They teach them automotive skills, they teach them how to cut hair, they teach them culinary skills, they do eyeglasses, you know, in these schools. And so I'm a proponent of those, I would love to see more of them as an option, because otherwise, children are just dropping out of school. Obviously, you know, we would, I would, you know, be pushing the state to finally give us all of the money that they owe us. Public schools are severely underfunded, unfortunately, and they cannot do, you know, all of the things that they would like to do. And it's expensive. We have teachers that are paying out of pocket for, you know, supplies. We have parents, I'm a parent, I have two children in school still, and I, sometimes when I see that list, I want to pass out, because that list is very expensive, and for those of you that are shopping this week or next week, you know what I mean. You know, one child can cost you up to $70 just on notebooks and folders, so imagine for a family of four and five children, it becomes burdensome. And so, you know, I, again, I am a strong believer, you know, first, obviously, that we need to continue to push the state to give us the funding that, you know, that they owe us, but also in promoting more vocational school options as an opportunity for our young people. Just pretty much standing up for our children and be at every community education councils to make sure that our children is getting the best that they can. It's really troublesome when a second grade grader cannot read or write and they pass them on to third grade. It's not that children's fault, I think we need to go back to basics and actually teach our parents on how, well, we really can't teach our parents how to do nothing because they working three to six jobs until we pass the minimum wage. So everything is back to my passing the minimum wage so parents can actually be parents. Parents can actually come home and actually see what their children's doing and helping them with their homework. Having quality after-school programs for our children, because, you know, we depend on that. Right now, our after-school programs, they go in, they put the book bags to the side, they play around, instead of getting that extra homework help that they need. I grew up in a Boys and Girls Club back in the day. I don't even see that nowhere near around. When I tried to be a mentor for a girl, you know how you sign up and you'd be like, "Oh, yes, I want to mentor another little girl?" It's very hard to find them programs in the district. I look far and wide. That's the reason why I continue to be a Girl Scout leader, so I can encourage each girl to stay in school and let them know that their options is not limited based on the circumstances that they have. Making sure that we have quality shelters, so when these children is actually sleeping in shelter, they're getting a good night's sleep, not just trying to figure out, should they tuck themselves in because a rat is going to get them, or it's very unsafe or unhealthy, or somebody's going to be fighting, or somebody's going to get stabbed. That's an unsafe environment for that children to do. So all them elements play a part of the education system. So we need to change our shelter system and making sure that our assemblyman and our state senator is giving us our money. He liked to say he's going to give us $3.5 million, but right now, our smart boards do not work. Our teachers is like very burdened down with 20 students to one teacher. I believe in small classroom size to really individualize the training for each kid, because not every kid learns the same way. I have a niece, she likes to draw as she learn. You know, another kid will like to look in a book and be like, "Okay, I got this." Everybody learns different ways and we need to be able to teach our teachers that, so they can do individualized training, so our children can graduate. And making sure that we get them back at fourth grade, if they can't read and write at fourth grade to get that extra help that they need, because by the time they get to 11th grade, they either going to drop out of high school, or they're going to go to college and take remedial education. Back in the day, that used to suck up our financial aid, it was with the remedial classes. And I always believed that remedial classes is meant for people who's been out of school for 20 years, not just a high school student just graduated from college. So we need to really go back to basics and bringing our Boys and Girls Club back into the community, and having quality after-school programs to be the extra support that the parents need, so these children can feel confident in their learning, so when they go to school, they got it. But we need to change our shelter system too, and that's the reason why we need to bring our discretionary fund money to small community nonprofit organizations such as Bronx Works, so we can provide permanent affordable housing, so they don't have to worry about bouncing from shelter to shelter to shelter.
We are going to take three of the questions that we've been given from the audience, and I know that everybody wants their question answered. So because of time, we can't deal with all of the questions, but what we want you to note, that the remaining questions will be posted online on the Facebook event for candidates to answer. And if you feel that your question was not addressed tonight, please note that all candidate contact is available in your programs, and that many more issues are covered in our Faith Over Fear Voters Guide included in your program as well. Okay? So the first question we're going to take is, what do you think is the most pressing issue or issues facing this district?
It's always going to be housing and minimum wage. You know, without our minimum wage being to a point where we can actually afford where we live, that's always going to be an issue. And when I talk about affordable housing, I have to talk about wages, because to me, they're one and the same. They wash us each other. If I have more money coming in my paycheck, I can afford $1,200, $2,000 a month for housing and don't have to worry if I need to put food on the table, how to get to work, how to get to childcare, and that's one and another things I want to lobby too, is trying to figure out how we can do universal childcare and tell our children can be able to go to school at three years old, because that will relieve a lot of a burden from parents, especially single parents. So that's, to me, that's the two pressing issues, minimum wage and affordable housing.
I would say that housing, I agree with Tamika, housing, and I would, but I would also add, public safety. Housing for a variety of reasons. Our NYCHA housing stock is deteriorating very rapidly. People are living in apartments that have, that are mold-infested, that are rat-infested with repairs that are sometimes never coming. We have individuals that live in public housing who haven't had working refrigerators in weeks, and so we're talking about getting food, where are they going to store this food? Oftentimes, they don't have that. How are we preserving existing units? How are we ensuring that the residents that live here today are not being harassed out of their apartments? It's something that's a, that's a big problem here in the South Bronx.
So this, the Bronx is not new to me. I'm always going to be here, I'm a community person, and it's my stepping ground. I don't think that the Bronx is separate from East Harlem. When I talk about District 8, I mean everybody, that's the whole, up High Bridge, Longwood, Morris, Mud Haven, it's everybody, and we need to try to figure out how we're going to come together and start picking the East River and across the bridge and start picking sides, and let's get clean this area up together, because I firm believe that a community that plans together grows a strong foundation for the future of our kids.
Well, again, I worked for the city council speaker for 11 years, and for 11 years, we represented some portion of the Bronx. Four years ago, that portion actually was, grew, because there was a growth in population, and so the district's lines were redrawn, and so we went from having maybe 10% of the South Bronx to 51% of the South Bronx. So I do a lot of work here, I work, I do a lot of organizing in public housing, I am there quite frequently, people know who I am because I spend a lot of time in resident association meetings. Again, we have an office on 137th Street in St. Anne's where we provide constituent services and we provide access to legal assistance. I also do a lot of work with our senior centers, because I have a background in senior services, and so I do a lot of work at the Patterson Senior Center, Mitchell Senior Center, Betancet Senior Center, providing them the necessary funding so that they can provide their seniors the best level of programming available. I do a lot of work on public safety matters, so I do a lot of work with the local precincts, trying to identify ways that, you know, we as a city council can be helpful to ensuring that the crime rate is reduced. So I've done a lot, I've had the benefit of, you know, working in this community for a really long time. I also work very closely with, you know, our guard, local gardeners and environmentalists and in trying to bring clean air to the South Bronx and bring more fresh fruits and vegetables, so we do provide a lot of funding for stuff like that. So I've been very grateful, very happy to serve the Bronx for the last 11 years and look forward to doing that in the next four.
At this time, we have about 25 minutes left. I am going to pull three people from the floor, and I'm going to have just a minimal... And I'm going to have just a minimal of thirty-second question, and we're gonna give the candidate two minutes to answer. So we're gonna have a clergy, we're going to have a community organization person, and we're going to have a resident of this area. Is that okay with the candidates?
Sure.
Okay, let's do it, let's do it. So, right now, I'm going to call my brother from NAN. His name is Herman Francis, and he's going to come and give us a thirty-second question. He's a part of the Bronx Chapter of NAN, so we're going to come and give him thirty seconds to ask a question to our candidates.
Good evening, everyone. Yes. Issue is basically education, because I was taught that if you give a person a fish, they eat for a meal. But you educate a person how to fish, they eat for life. Public education and proliferation of charter schools and the cradle to the prison pipeline. As mostly, you know, there is a parole office open up. And when they came before Community Board One, where I used to be a member of, also I was a member of the school board before Bloomberg took it over. They said the reason why they put their parole officers down there, because most of the people that come to parole come out these zip codes. Which means that we know that jail is not a solution, it's a problem of a failed educational system. Dealing with public education and the twenty-seven billion dollars that the city spends on public education every year and the money that the state has now put down for the campaign of physical equity with one of the lawsuits. How are we gonna deal with public education? Because every neighborhood in this city has a public school within walking distance. Which will put the people in the neighborhood to work inside them public schools. And use that money to stop this pipeline in these state penitentiaries.
I mean, yeah, it is a, it's a very good question. You know, we need to be, we need to be funding our schools so that they're not failing our children. I actually was a high school, well, I actually dropped out from the first week of high school because I became pregnant. And I, and I agree with you that if you teach somebody to fish, they will eat forever. I was very fortunate in having found a mentor at Bronx Community College who not only allowed me to go to school at night to get my GED, but also introduced me to a program for work, for mothers on public assistance that allowed me an opportunity as the first person in my family ever to go into a college and to be able to go to school around my children's schedule as opposed to going into the web program. You know, we need to do better by our schools because, you know, children are failing for a variety of reasons. One, you know, they're not getting the instruction that they need, they're not getting the supportive services that they need. But the schools, again, as you mentioned, as you referenced, they're underfunded, and the state needs to do their job. I think that, you know, on the city level, we're trying. Again, I really do believe that there have to be more options because school is not an option for everyone. Not everyone wants to go to school, so.
Wow. I had my child at fourteen years old, and if it wasn't for the support of my teachers and support of mentors, I wouldn't have been able to graduate from high school with a three-year-old child at my website. So I think we need to actually partner up with the parent coordinators because the parent coordinators is like the mom to all these children that's coming in there. Because when they get a boo-boo, they go to the parent coordinator. And the parent coordinator can actually educate our teachers on how to deal with our children, especially when they're coming from a shelter situation, when they're tired all the time. When they get in the class, the first thing they do is, they tired, right? So we have to let our teachers know that it's okay for them to take a break and let them get that hour nap, you know, inside their classroom without being harassed. You know, it's going back to educating our teachers how to deal with our community. Because they don't know how to deal with our community, because some of these teachers live in New Jersey, right? I used to be a PTA president at River East Elementary School, and my principal lived in New Jersey. I used to have to tell them like, "Hey dude, you don't know what this girl is going through, she came from a shelter." Right? By the time she get home, it's eleven o'clock at night from that shelter, because her dad had to work three jobs. So when she get to school at seven o'clock, she missed her breakfast. So, you know, breakfast is a very good, important part of the day. So I used to hold her breakfast in the classroom for her so she could eat her breakfast and ask that teacher to give her a nap so she can rest and be productive. And then I take it as stepfather, you know, because I like to be, I say all of my children. I used to have one hundred and eighty-one children inside of River East Elementary School. So I had that children actually come and stay the night in my house for weeks and weeks at a time to give them a break from their everyday stresses, because it can be very stressful for them to deal with that. So I think, to answer your question, it goes back to holding people accountable of how they treat our children. And that's what I'm gonna be doing as your City Councilwoman, is holding people accountable and making sure they understand how to deal with our children at all income brackets and not just how to deal with the rich ones, but also how to deal with the ones that's in the shelter. The ones whose dad is working three or four jobs and they can't check their homework, but they still need to be able to get the education. So I'm gonna be a child's advocate right there by their side and making sure that every principal, have a meeting again, I'm back to having a meeting. I always joke that I'm going to be the most committee person at the City Council because I'm gonna have a committee for everything, because I'm gonna be a brand-new City Councilperson. And the best way to govern, in my eyes, is asking the community for their input. Because the platform that I've been running on for these last couple of days, it took me two and a half years of actually going out in the community and actually asking them, "What do you want me to do to represent you?" These are not things that I came up and thought it was a great running point and say, "You know what, I'm gonna put this on there." These are, these are your words in your mouth, so I hope that when you get me in to be your City Councilwoman, you hold me accountable, and you come and visit me when things are good and not when things get bad.
Thank you to both candidates. At this time, I'm gonna ask one of the residents from this area, Sister Demise Vaughn, to come and ask the two questions.
Hello, my name is Demise Vaughn. I worship here at Fort Motte Baptist Church. My question to you guys is, how much power does a councilperson really have? In a year from now, we hear your ideas, they sound great. A year from now, we're having a meeting saying, "Why isn't this stuff accomplished?" What's the red tape that will prevent you? How much power do you guys really have? What has councilpeople before you done that actually made an impact in the community?
Great question. You know, we have a little bit of power, we don't have all power. Because as you know, City Council only just make the rules that govern the local. So it's all about great forging relationships with your State Senator and with your Congressman so things can get moving and things can get jumping. You know, there's a lot of people, for instance, Mr. Williams, he, I'd like, he inspired me, right? He's so accessible, everybody talks good about him. So I'm gonna be actually connecting with him and trying to figure out how he can manage his job and being accessible so you don't have to come to me a year from now and saying, "Hey, I put you in office and you didn't do anything." But it's also your job to come and check me when things is bad too, right? So not when things is too bad, things is like when you tell me that I was gonna come and have a monthly meeting and I didn't have a monthly meeting. It's your job to call me and say, "Hey, Tamika, what's up with my monthly meeting?", right? So governing goes two ways, is residents' participation as well as government participating as well. So once the community start inputting and start holding us accountable, that's when real change is gonna happen. You know, because I'm only one person, and I have to deal with fifty other people who may not think that our struggles is their struggles. So, but if I have you as the community coming to my hearings and speaking up for me, they can understand our struggles. Okay?
So the City Council has a lot of, they actually have a lot of power. They have a lot of land use discretion that designate, dictate what, you know, is in, is not built in a specific community. For the most part, a lot of development that we see is private, so it isn't always up to the council member. But where, in those areas where it is, the City Council has a lot of discretion over those. We also negotiate the budget, right? And that gives us direct oversight over city agencies. And that, that means that we hold hearings and we hold, we should be holding several different agencies accountable when they're not doing right by the community. So, you know, there is some power, but was the question around housing? No, or just in general, yeah? I mean, it also depends on the council member. We have council members that are a little bit more engaged in the community than others, right? In our office, for instance, we do a lot of work on the ground. We brought participatory budgeting to the people, giving people access to their taxpayer dollars, right? You decide how you wanna spend that money. So we brought that back to the community. We also work diligently with our resident leaders, and they tell us what their needs are. And then we ensure that the city agency that's responsible is ensuring that that need is met. So we, we can be a powerful force to be reckoned with if we choose to. I think it depends on the council member.
At this time, we'll have Erin Russell to come and greet us and give us a question, final question to our candidates.
Good evening, everyone. There's so many questions running through my mind, but I wrote a couple of them down just so I wouldn't ramble on and ask you too many questions. But I'm so glad that you, the last question that was asked is just relative to what I wanted to ask tonight. And that deals with development, because that's one of the critical issues in this community and other parts of the Bronx. Because the Bronx is the hotbed right now of developers, with only ones with land, and everybody wants it.
That's right.
And so, here's the question, I don't know if you ever thought about this, but I do some development, because I do loans and I do other kinds of things like that with churches and other things. So here's the question. We all know that new development will not stop, and that much of the new buildings will be rented at prevailing rates. That's gonna happen, right? So here's the question. In what ways can you work with HPD, because you do, and local developers, because you can, to get local residents involved in the process so that they actually benefit financially from the development? See, here's a thought. There is, there is a part of negotiation that will allow, because the developers only wanna make money. So how can we get the local residents involved so that they become a part of that resource that comes in so that they can make money in the development and don't have to move out of their residence and out of the community, but can stay with not just their salaries, but with additional income that's residual, doesn't stop?
Yeah, so again, we have more discretion to do that when we're talking about public land, which we still have a lot of in the Bronx. We don't have that benefit in the East Harlem part of the district, but we do have a lot of that in the South Bronx. We've had several projects that have come to fruition or in the process of coming to fruition. And what we've done, the way that we've tackled that is that we have ensured that the local community is involved in, you know, meeting with the developer. Right now, which is a little bit different. But in Millbrook Houses, for instance, we had an infill project, right? And that meant that on one hundred and thirty-seventh Street in St. Anne's, parking lot was leased to, in this case, for a nonprofit organization to develop one hundred percent affordable housing. Obviously, nobody wants to give away public land. But in this case, we're trying to build housing because we're losing units to destabilization. And we have an overpopulation of seniors that live in this community that are desperately seeking this type of housing. It's a hundred percent affordable, it's like Section Eight, so. But it was a process. How do we ensure that the residents that live in that development are benefiting from this agreement? Because, yeah, we're satisfying the mayor's quota in terms of the number of units that he's, you know, he's committed to building. But what is the benefit to the existing, to the immediate community? And so we were able to sit and negotiate terms for a new senior center because we needed one desperately, because the one that they have right now, which Alexi goes to, is very tiny. They don't have any service, they don't have the, you know, the space to provide any programming. So nothing is going on there besides people coming in to have lunch. We were also able to negotiate better lighting improvements in that development because it's very dark and it's also one of the most dangerous. It's one of the developments where we have seen the highest number of shooting incidences in the last few years. We were able to negotiate that one, the whole building was a hundred percent affordable, but also that residents that live there have access to those apartments as well. And that's usually how, you know, the extent of the negotiations that we have. We can put community benefit agreements in place, we can do that, but they're not legally binding. And so they don't always work. And I think that the best way that we have found is bringing everybody together and kind of just, you know, ensuring that the developers are listening to the concerns of the community and are willing to give something back.
So I need to sit with you?
Yeah.
To pick your mind and trying to figure out how that can be possible? So I really haven't really thought about it, so thanks for bringing that question up to me. I was so busy of trying to preserve our affordable housing. I'm really against building anything new until we preserve the existing stock that we have. So whenever you free, can you please educate me on that issue, please?
Thank you so much. Thank you so much. I would like to ask you both the question. We're going to give you two minutes each to just give some closing statements. But I want you also to, since we are an interfaith and religious organization, we want to talk about religious freedom and hate crimes to our religious community. So in your last closing statement, I'm going to ask you just to address that real quick, real briefly, for we can put some ease to our congregations at large. Thank you so much.
Back to, it's my job to ensure NYPD is protecting and not targeting our community. And the only way to do this is bring the community and the NYPD together on a monthly basis. I would not tolerate any hate crimes that will protect everyone's religious freedom in this district. It's only when we have constructive dialogue from all stakeholders and open lines of communication that we can tackle the issues that plague our community by working together. It's all about working together and understanding each other's background. Because once we understand each other's background, we'd be able to live together.
Well, you know, we see that we're living in a time where we have a president that has given, basically, permission to extremists to voice their hatred and their disdain for us all. And I include myself, because I know a lot of my friends, people that I have known for many years, were so upset over Bernie Sanders losing that they actually voted for Trump. And I said, "He's not after us, he's after the Mexican community." And I said, "Oh, did you really think that we were not part of the Mexican community? Did you think that he thought of us anything better? Did you think that he thought that we were naturalized American citizens?" He does not. I do not condone hatred of any kind. I do not condone police surveillance of mosques, of political institutions, of religious groups, of student bodies. And I will do everything in my power to ensure that that does not happen. We do have some laws already in place that prohibit such behavior. There's always oversight that needs to occur to ensure that those laws are being adhered to. And if elected to the City Council, I promise to work with our legislative team to ensure that we have the strongest legislation possible, the strongest laws that protect our community residents.
Thank you. Thank you for responding to our community concerns and our audience members. We want to encourage you to continue to interact with the candidates on their social medium, media platforms. And I also want to remind you again that the ushers have pledge cards for you to fill out so that you can make your pledge to vote. Now, each candidate will have one minute to give closing remarks. Please use this time to remind the audience why they should vote for you. You have one minute. One minute.
All right, so a hundred and forty words, right? So my name is Tamika Map, and, you know, like I said before, I've been a district resident for this community for the past ten years. I'm the only candidate in this race talking about raising the minimum wage to twenty dollars per hour because I think we need someone that's bold like me to shake up the establishment to making sure that our quality of life is being taken care of. I also think that it's not always the most experienced or the most qualified is most effective. The City Council job is actually trying to build relationships and being relatable to the to the district, and be able to talk everybody's language inside the district, and be able to mail like one of you, right? So if I could talk your language and bring it back to the City Council so my colleagues can understand where we're coming from, we just made leeway, we just made change, and we just made an impact on how to get things done. I'm a type of person that I roll up my sleeves and I pitch in anytime and any chances I get. If I'm at an event, if they look like they need help, I'm going to pitch in. That's the kind of candidate I am. I'm always going to be in the community, and time is up. So that's me.
What is your name again?
Oh, Tamika Map, and I'm number two on the ballot.
I'm Diana Yala. I'm actually running for the City Council, because I, one, I've been in this district for over 20 years, first in senior services, and through the last 11 years with the New York City Council Speaker. And when I took the job at the City Council Speaker's office, I was very reluctant, because I didn't have any political experience. But what I did have was life experience. The life experience of being a teenage parent, of being a high school dropout, the victim of domestic violence, of being homeless, of being hungry. All of those experiences taught me the skills that I needed to provide a service to this community. Because a lot of the times, the people that were coming into our offices had those shared experiences, and I was able to help guide them through that. I have a genuine love for my community, and I only want to see it grow, and I only want to see it prosper. I don't have any ulterior motives. I don't, I have never run for public office before. I believe that we need more women in the City Council. We're running out of them. Thank you. We're almost extinct in the City Council, so that's a big issue for me. But I love my community.
Thank you for your responses. Okay. I now have two final things to ask you. This requires a simple yes or no. So you have 10 seconds to say yes or no. You each have given information about our Faith Over Fear platform. Do you endorse our Faith Over Fear platform? Yes or no?
Yes.
Yes.
If elected, do you commit to meet with our community again within the first 100 days of taking office?
I could do better. Let's do 30.
Yes.
Thank you. Okay. Thank you. Thank you for giving us your time today. Thank you for being here. To the audience, thank you for giving up your evening to come and to be with us, to listen to the candidates, to think deeply about the things that you have heard, and just to spend your time with us. I want to say thank you to the clergy who are here. Thank you for those members of Fort Mott who are here. Thank you for the members of the Mott Haven Reformed Church who are here. We've heard a lot tonight, but this is only the first step. Okay, this is only the first step. Please read the voter guides. We will have more printed in Spanish. And so let us know if you need more voter guides for your community members. Share the guides with your friends, share them with your families, share them with your neighbors, and reach out to these candidates to continue to have conversations with them. Our goal as an interfaith community is to continue to lead our community in coming together. We cannot do this isolated. We cannot do this individually and alone. We have to stand together as a community. Okay. And so we have a lot of work to do. Don't want you to forget to leave your contact information, your pledge cards, and so that we can stay in touch and we can work together. I have one last thing that I want to say before I turn it over to Reverend Duckett. I want to thank you, Reverend Duckett, for opening up your house of worship, for us to be here this evening. And everybody should have gotten a flyer about the Mott, hey. Now see, now that's my youth leader. I have, I have to honor. Everybody should have gotten a flyer about our community block party. We do a community, and this is for the community. Even though we're on 146th Street, this is for the community. We do a community block party every year. Our block party this year is September the 9th, from 11:00 AM to 5:00 PM. Come, there's going to be food, there's going to be a lot of good stuff. So just come on by and spend some time with us. And now I'm going to turn it over to Reverend Duckett.
Come on, let's put our hands together and thank God for this wonderful, wonderful occasion. Our time is well spent. We thank these two candidates, beautiful young women who came and spoke about the issues in our community. So we are, we are tremendously thankful for you finding that robbery to come out and just speak to us in the forgotten part of District 8. Amen. I'm going to ask each person to stand, and as you stand, I'm going to ask you to hold someone's hand. This. I would like to thank Pastor Silly and MRCH, or MC, yes, I'm trying to, go ahead. I had it right the first time. MHRC, MHRC and FMBC for coming out and supporting these, these two candidates and your two pastors. Amen. So I thank you for that. Since we're inviting people to events. I, I got one better for you. MHRC starts at 10:00 AM on Sundays. FMBC starts at 12:00 PM on Sundays. So if you're looking for anywhere to go, you can go to one of the two churches, which are down the block from each other. Amen? Amen. Thank Pastor Osorio, who, who does pastor right around the corner. Amen, 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 amen. Also, on September the 4th, which is Labor Day, I'm pretty sure everybody has off, Fort Mott hosts a prayer station, Cookout, in St. Mary's Park. And what we do is that we pray, we hand out tracks, we sing songs, and we stand in the middle of the park and profess Jesus as our Lord and Savior. So we want you, if you're not busy on the 4th, to come out. It's all day. We start before the sun comes up and leave after the sun comes down. So please, ladies and gentlemen, if you're not busy on the 4th or the 9th, come out to both community events. St. Mary's Park is right around the corner on St. Anne's Avenue. Amen? Let us pray. Heavenly Father, we thank you, oh God, for, we know that this is the day you have made. And we know that, oh God, that we're going to rejoice. We're going to support each candidate, we're going to support each other, and we're going to support the Bronx, New York. We pray, oh God, that as we leave this place, that you will keep us under your blood, and like our scripture said earlier, that we will be strong and courageous. So Heavenly Father, we pray, oh God, that you give both of these candidates the wisdom, the knowledge, and the understanding of how to lead your people in this dangerous and treacherous time. This is our prayer, that you'll give us traveling mercies back home. In the name of Jesus Christ, we do pray. And the people of God said, amen.